About the college meeting, the Alexander County Board of Commissioners in session at this time, the 24th day of May 2021. Myself, Larry Yedder will have the invocation and then Commissioner Marty Penna will have the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all would, please rise.
My kind of most gracious, we appreciate the opportunity we are given to come before you today. We appreciate the fact that through your guidance that we're able to do the things that need to be done in this county. We'd ask that you be with those leaders across the state, across our nation, and across the world, that they can bring peace upon our people in this world. We'd ask you to be with our volunteers, with our emergency personnel, ask you to be with law enforcement, be with those who have lost loved ones. We ask these things in thy name for all those people. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to be seated. At this time, does any commissioner have a report?
Mr. Chairman, I was able to attend a grand opening of a business on 16 S and P Wind Attaining, and a pretty good location, and a guy does real good work. I think he does a lot of the county vehicles and their sheriff's cars, so if anybody needs Wind Attaining done, they'll fix you up down there.
He's a good guy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do want to give a shout out to our, someone might have to help me, on the cheerleaders that went to state and come in second, I think.
ACHS cheerleaders?
Yes, what's the name of that group, actually?
I think it's Cheer Team.
Cheer Team, that's it? I want to give a shout out to them. I think they came in second from the state over the weekend.
And congratulations to the softball team, too, for making it to the finals. Come up short, but made it to the finals. Proud of our kids.
Yep. Anyone else? If not, gentlemen, you have your agenda before you tonight. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as stated.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, you can raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, nuisance cases 134, 152, and 184 Fire Lane. Bill Rogers, Chief Code Enforcement Officer, you'll come forward, please. As this is a public hearing, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to nuisance cases 134, 152, and 184.
The motion is made, it's your second.
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, you can raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Rogers?
The first case is for 134 Fire Lane. On November 3rd, 2020, we received complaints regarding structures on Fire Lane and their condition, and blocking of, potential blocking of the DOT right of ways. We went out and photographed it. These are aerial photos as of March 2021. This is a video taken from the beginning of Fire Lane to its terminus. You can see that this covers all of these cases that are before you tonight. What we're not here for tonight are encroachments on the DOT right of way. I met with DOT this afternoon, they're going to be handling that. We do not have jurisdiction on the DOT right of way. First letter was sent on November 5th, 2020. Also, it was re-inspected on March 23rd, with no significant changes noted to the property. A second notice was sent, and along with that notice was a notice of a single wide mobile home that has been placed on that property without any permits or inspections. The third notice, the hearing notice, was sent on March 13th, excuse me, April 13th. All notices were accepted, they were sent via certified mail. Staff is before you tonight because we have a building or premises which is constructed or maintained in such a manner as to provide food, shelter, or protection for rats, mice, snakes, vermin, or insects, as the accumulation of rubbish, trash, or junk causing or threatening to cause the inhabitation therein of rats, mice, snakes, or vermin, and the abandonment of junk motor vehicles on public or private property. We're here tonight seeking that the commissioners issue an order of abatement, as our efforts to bring these matters to a resolution have been unsuccessful.
Have they done anything?
None that, if they have done, it's not noticeable.
Just one more.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, if you'd like to speak, you may do so. Come forward to the podium, state your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, my name's Matt Taylor. I'm the owner of the property 152 and 184. I did get the notice, and I have made significant changes. I have hauled off, I think, 14 cars, I have hauled off 17 loads, trailer loads of stuff, and still doing it today. And each time I did get this paper given, is like a three-day period I was supposed to have everything done, within three days, and that wasn't possible. I've been hospitalized twice, which I'm not saying that's an excuse, but I was trying to get my printer to print off papers, where I could show today of what it looks like today. There is way difference, there's not even compares. And I'm working on it every day. I don't know if this is the gentleman I spoke with before. I told him I was well in compliance, wanted to do, to get everything right. And I said, I'm still working today on it. Like it is, I got some pictures on my phone, which I don't know if you can see it here now or not, but I couldn't get my printer to work to print it off, but I can show you my phone, the same videos that he showed, from about the same angles, that would prove I have made significant changes, if y'all would look at the phone. And I want to be well in compliance. I want to make this work. And I think I've made, and anybody around me say that, I've done a lot of work. Thank you.
Sir, when did you start working on it?
The first notice, whenever, I spoke with a gentleman, might be you I spoke with on the phone?
In November.
In November? Yeah, I've been hospitalized twice for it. I got severe heart failure, so I couldn't do nothing for a long time when I did get out. But I have made progress, it just, I did, it was a big junk pile, it was a mess. And me, I was trying to do it from the root of the problem, you know what I'm saying? I started from the very bottom, where it don't look, where it didn't look like much, and worked my way up to the top, to try to eliminate the whole problem from future happening. Instead of just doing it from the top, going down, where you can just see it, I was trying to eliminate the whole problem altogether for good, and may not try to get that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else? If you would, sir, if you'd come up and state your name.
My name's Brently Minton. I'm here about the property, I think it's 130, the one before his. I actually have just been wheeled that property by my grandfather, and there were some people staying there, which they're not any longer, got them out of there, but they were just, I guess, pretty much squatting on the place, or whatever. From my understanding, the trailer had been moved in there for storage. There was no porches, nothing like that on it. It was pulled in there, I don't know what y'all's permits or whatever require for anything being there for storage, if anything, but that's not the case, the people weren't using it for that. And anyways, I threatened them with the cops to get them out of the place, and then finally, they did leave there, or whatever. I'm not going to state their names and stuff, but that's beside the point. But I haven't done anything to my property. I've just now got down there and seen what kind of mess it was, and it's terrible, yeah, I agree. But I haven't really had the resources, like as far as trucks and trailers, which this gentleman here, he said that he would be willing to help me. I went down there and talked with him like the other day, and he said he'd be willing to help me also, and I will be here, and I don't know if it counts for anything, but to let y'all know that he has made a significant change in his, from what I've seen. And anyways, that's pretty much all I have to say for myself. I mean, I've just now got deed to the property myself, so I'm just asking for mercy, or a little bit of time or something, if I could, if I could. I mean, maybe some kind of resources if I can get any help, you know, but anyways.
Sir, are you the owner of 134?
Yes, sir.
When was the property transferred to you?
I don't have the date on it, I'd have to get it, my piece of mail, but it's been within the last two weeks.
Looks like it was transferred over on 4/26.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak? Anybody have any questions? As this is a public hearing? Bill, do you have anything else?
Excuse me, but we ran two, three cases into one, we're just hearing the one right now.
Bill, when was the last time that anyone from the county was?
Cody just told me he was there two weeks ago.
Still, was it like it was?
It's still not in compliance.
Mr. Chairman, my concern is, I mean, and I'm, I don't mean to be at all difficult, but you know, we're talking six months. And, I mean, that's half a year.
Could I show you the pictures of it, where it was now?
Would y'all like to see the pictures?
Sure.
Sure, sure. Bring them up.
The video that you seen is, we have a spirit to be changed, in this property.
I got the building off the road, we lost two cars to the road, I moved the building.
Do you live on site?
Yes, sir. I inherited the property, count that there's nine of those brothers and sisters, which everybody still got similar.
Excuse me, if you don't mind, if you can speak at the mic, it'd be better, please. Thank you.
My name is Matt Taylor. But the property I inherited, basically, there's nine of those brothers and sisters, which you don't give the excuse, but there's some of everybody, every one of our stuff is at this property for the moment.
It's always more difficult when you're dealing with
More people, the harder it is.
With a bunch of brothers and sisters and cousins, or whoever it is, with anything.
Mr. Taylor, how long do you think it would take you to finish up? A week or two?
I could do that. Say two weeks, if somebody could, I'd be okay with that. If that could be possible.
What you, finish, say whatever. Starting to say something.
But I have took off like 17 loads.
Anything else, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, one other question. Is there any immediate, I guess, danger or detriment to emergency vehicles, you know, being able to, you know, being able to get down the road?
In the roadway, excuse me. Stuff in the roadway.
Sir, excuse me, just one moment, if you don't mind. That's all, I mean, I'm not fussing, but whenever you speak, I'd like for you to come to the mic and speak, okay? Because this thing's over the radio and everything, and the people out there want to hear what you say and everything. That's the reason we ask you to come forward and state your name. So if you have something to say, please come forward, it's fine now. Yeah.
The stuff that was in the roadway, and the pictures or whatever, the animals, they're gone, I got rid of them, they're gone, no animals there whatsoever. And the big, whatever it was, entertainment looking center thing, wooden thing, it's gone. All the couch, all that stuff that was sitting in the road is no longer in the road. There is currently a vehicle in the road, because I've come down there to start trying to make some type of improvement, but when I get back, it won't be there. I mean, just while I'm there working, the vehicle will be there. And that's just, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, thank you. Bill, you were going to address the question that Commissioner Lael had, if you don't mind, please.
Yeah, there has been concern voiced that fire apparatus at times cannot get down that roadway, and also school buses. At the end of the roadway, which continues to be a DOT right of way, there was so much items that they were concerned they wouldn't be able to make the turn. Also, the fire department owns the property behind these residences, and items have begun to be dumped on their property. And they're kind of concerned about that. Not saying anyone here's doing it, but there is stuff on their property, and that's visible from the aerial photographs.
Mr. Taylor, did you have something else?
Yes, I'm Matt Taylor. I agree with him, stuff was on the fire department's property. That's the reason, when I stated a while ago, I started from the bottom up. I removed all them items first. And about DOT right of way, about the vehicles that parked in the road, the state trooper has been down there before, or whatever, and from where I'm parked at today, he's at the end of the road, he's, the road used to go on past my house 30 years ago. They closed that road off probably about, I mean, around 30 years ago. The owner for the other property down below me closed the road off, you know what I'm saying, where it cannot be used no more, for my property own, and it goes like in a block. The state trooper told me, as long as I park where I do now, it's totally fine. He has, and it has blocked a school bus before, and fire department, fire department has actually gotten in touch with me about that before, and that was a while back, and it's not been the case ever since, way before this ever took place, on my situation. Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
I don't have question, concern, though. You know, I think, well, I appreciate you guys' attempts to do something, but this started a long time ago, and if it's taken six months to get started, you know, how long is it going to take to get finished if we just say, well, okay, we're going to trust that you go and that you do that? One has to think that way. If you put yourself here, you'd have to think the same way.
Yes, sir, I understand that. In a sense, back whenever this started, and whenever we done this, and gave me like, I think I had a week or two weeks in between this to have it done with him. And me personally, once it went over that, I kind of quit doing anything, thinking that it was over, to be honest with you, until I got this last letter, is the whole reason I've not been continuing to do this, because I didn't think no more about it after that date, I thought they just took their action the way they was. So actually, this whole other time in between that, I'm still making a little progress, I am, but I've not been in no hurry for it, because I actually thought it was a closed case, basically, until I just got this new letter. That is the reason that it took so long. If I would have known better, I wouldn't have waited.
I might be wrong, but I think it was November, March, 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 April, and then now.
The only time I spoke with anybody was just in the November part, I think. And I called and talked to somebody, and told him, he said, as long as I was making, I can't remember who it was, up at the inspection officer, he said, as long as I was making progress, that he wouldn't really do anything. And I did the first two weeks, or whatever, I did, I've worked numerous hours in getting everything out in a hurry, trying to. But just some way of me thinking, not knowing it, I thought it all went away until I just got this March letter, and it only gave me two days to have it cleaned up. And from that point, when I got the letter, I had two days to have it cleaned up.
You taking all the landfill?
A bunch of, a bunch of, just, basically, ain't none of mine really trash, all mine's like cars, metal. Yeah, I took off like 17 loads to the scrapyard. Most of mine's not really, it's all basically valuable stuff, which I hate to see go, really. I mean, but it is. That is the reason why it took so long. I misunderstood, apparently. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the one on 134? Does anybody else have any question concerning 134 Fire Lane? And you showed all of them at one time, so we got 134, 152, and 184 Fire Lane?
Yes, sir.
Is there any other thing, anything else you'd want to say about the other two?
No, sir, just to talk about what Mr. Taylor said, in November, I did speak to Mr. Taylor, and I told him Alexander County's goal was to have him clean it up, and we would work with him as long as it was steady progress. We saw some progress, then things actually got worse. And if in the last two weeks, we've had progress again, my feeling is it was only because of the public hearing coming up. I have a concern that after tonight, it'll stop.
Okay. All right. Any, did you have something else you'd like to say, sir?
I would just like to add, I know this fella here, and he is a hard worker when he's well, and he seems to be doing fine right now, and I've been seeing the progress he's been making, and actually, it's been getting me motivated to do something about mine. And like I say, I just, in just the past few weeks, you know, just got my property wheeled to me, and I'm most definitely going to try to clean it up, and he said he'll help me, and I told him that I'll help him as well. But we've both, I've got some family and friends that's willing to help me as far as handwork, but the truck and stuff will be more him, and we can't haul off so much a day, you know? There's hours on times that you can take these items to where you need to take them to, whether it be the landfill or scrap metal place, and we only, I think we have three trailers in total, and that's me borrowing one. And even if we load all three trailers up, or whatever, after hours, we still, you know, I understand that we've had time to do this, but I have just now became aware of mine myself, and that's just all I wanted to say about that. I do not think that the progress by no means will stop, if anything, it will speed up, and that's just all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, one more statement, my friend. Come on, and we'll let you make this one, and that'll be it.
I would just like to, first, what the statement he made, that the progress stopped and got worse, that is not the case. I mean, it might look, got worse, but that's since I started from bottom up, it made it look worse, but it's actually getting way better. Because everything's coming up from the bottom to the top, and it makes it look worse, but there was steady, a lot of progress going on at this moment, that he said, well, no progress stopped, that was not the case. It just couldn't be seen from the pictures. There was way more trash than what the pictures actually showed. I mean, more vehicles, then, I didn't even know I had so many vehicles down there. But that's, the progress has never stopped like that whatsoever, but thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, at this time, does anybody have anything else to present?
Question?
That's same thing.
Yeah, what's, what's next? What's the next step?
Okay, the next step would be for you to issue an order of abatement. If the owner, having been ordered to abate such public nuisance, fails or neglects or refuses to abate the nuisance, within 20 days from receipt of said order, the county commissioners or designees shall cause said condition to be removed or otherwise remedied by having employees of the county or designated local contractor to go upon said premises, abate and remove such nuisance under the supervision of an employee designated by the county commissioners or designee.
Then what happens?
If it's not abated within, if you issue
It's not abated, and we have to send somebody down there to do it.
We either send county staff, or we retain a private contractor to come in and clean it up.
And then, once the property's clear, then what's the deal with it?
As authorized by General Statute 168, 193, the actual cost incurred by the county in abating or otherwise remedying nuisance shall be charged to the owner of the property on which the nuisance exists. The county commissioners or designees shall mail a statement of charges to the owner of said premises, who must pay such charges within 30 days from receipt thereof. If charges for the abatement or removal of the public nuisance are not paid within 30 days after receipt of the statement of charges, such charges shall become a lien upon the property where the public nuisance exists, and shall be collected as unpaid taxes.
So if the abatement started, there'd be 20 days?
Yes, sir.
You say that until
You can issue a 20-day order.
Okay.
So it either has to be corrected in 20 days, or?
At the end of the 20 days, staff would go out and see if the nuisance has been abated, if not, you would have to order it to be abated.
That's almost three weeks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, say you could do it in two weeks, so you have a week in case something happens.
Mr. Minton, I saw you raise your hand, do you need to speak again? You need to approach, if you do, please.
Yes, sir, and ma'am, I'm not asking for no sympathy, no pity party, nothing like that, you know? You know, a lot of people in this world, you know, is fortunate enough to be born into a family, to have money and have things. And I understand this life is what you make it, I understand that completely. But you know, people have stuff in their prior history that goes on in their life, and the way they was raised, and the way they was, the things, you know, just in the way their life has been. And, you know, I'm very grateful to be wielded this property from my grandfather. My mother died when I was twelve years old. My dad, he's been in and out of prison, drunk, nothing, you know. He's a good guy, and I love him, as my father, you know? Bible says, you know, respect your mother and father regardless. But anyways, I just want to say that I'm glad to have the property, and I don't want it to be taken, and I'm willing to do whatever I am able to do to try to keep that from happening. And I just want to thank y'all for giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, all these properties are combined into one for the public hearing purposes? And so I think everybody said what they wanted to say, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion and we close the public hearing.
Motion made, it's closed. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate, raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion on this.
On which one?
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we voting on all of them as well?
Well, I think if you want to, we can vote on them one at a time, or however you desire to do. I think we can do that, there's no problem, because each one of them's a separate case. They just combine the cases in order for the public hearing. But I think if you want to look at each property, you could do that. I don't see a problem with that whatsoever.
Mr. Rogers, if the order is issued, when would that be? Like, latter part of next week, tomorrow? When would that happen?
I would have to prepare the order to get to the clerk for the board and have the chairman sign it, so it'd be this week sometime.
Several days just to get the order, right? So, and then we've got several days plus twenty. So we're three-plus weeks to be able to get it done.
Probably close to a month, yeah.
So the date speed, May the 24th, if we gave him till June the 30th, that it'd be cleaned up by then, or then we would order the abatement at that time? Or would that be too far out?
I don't think we can go against the ordinance.
I don't think we can go against the ordinance either, that's why I was asking the question.
Excuse me, you're meeting on June 21st, so you-
June 21st, right.
You can take your action then.
We'll take action on June 21st.
Yeah.
That's when we would issue the order, that's when the signing would be done. Or that's when we could actually just implement it.
Not issue the order tonight, don't they?
Or tonight.
I think you'd do the thing-
You'd do the order tonight, and then you'd have to hear on the progress, your next meeting.
And then if nothing's happened, then you take your act.
Then we, right.
Mr. Chairman, as a point of discussion, the owner of 134 has legally only owned the property since April-
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth. Which, in my opinion, is a completely different situation than the original notice given to the other property owner in November. So I feel like we need to look at the properties separately. Because, I mean, I understand life happens. You know, I, I understand, I mean, honestly, I've never inherited anything, but you, you know, if I did inherit something, I'm not gonna know what, you know, I wasn't in charge of the condition and/or what, you know, what it was. And, you know, we're talking, in my opinion, a completely different situation than six months ago.
Totally agree.
But that's just, like I say, just a point of discussion.
Can we table the thing until our next meeting? If something's been going?
On 134.
I think on 134, that makes sense.
To clarify, the deed exchange, it was a quitclaim deed. His grandfather signed the property over to him.
Okay.
So basically, Bill, what I'm understanding here is that we, whatever we do here tonight, we could do that, and then we come back at the next meeting, and if things have been cleaned up, and they're showing progress, then you will, I mean, then we're showing that they're making an effort to clean it up, and then if they have it cleaned up then, then the order would be released, isn't that correct?
Right. The ordinance says you have the option of issuing a twenty-day order-
Right.
-for abatement. We have to go back out at twenty days and see what progress, if all progress, some progress, then we have to report back to you.
Right.
So if they, tonight, if they did the abatement order on 152 and 184, that would fall within the timeline of our meeting.
Yes, sir.
Right.
And that would be the properties that you talked about, and then treat the other property a little differently, since it's just been conveyed to him.
Yeah, and that time would, man said it'd take him a couple weeks, so that would give him-
Yeah, hopefully not.
-three-plus weeks.
Right.
So should be plenty of time, I would think. But there's incentive to get the ball rolling down the hill, too.
You know, hopefully, that would give, that would give you guys, I mean, time to make the necessary, make the necessary corrections. Just prevent any health, you know, health issues and safety issues.
And if the other property is, if we wait until next month to deal with the other property, and give him some grace because of the change of the deed, if you guys are doing it together, you could focus on the first properties first, and the second properties whenever, you know, to expedite, help him get his done quick, and then he can help you get yours done, and we'll have it all done.
So at this time, gentlemen, entertain a motion.
Do them separately, we'll make it.
And we're gonna, we need to do these separately. We'll include item 152 and 184, we'll entertain those together, and then item 134 will be a separate issue, okay? So you can look at them different. Now, 134 is the property that was just attained on April the 26th, and 152, 184 is the property that's been there for a while.
I make a motion that we issue an order of abatement on 152 Fire Lane and 184 Fire Lane, effective whenever it gets drawn up.
Motion's been made affecting that property. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any more, any further discussion?
Just for clarification, that would give them twenty days after the abatement documentation is prepared.
Yes, it'll give them twenty days after the day that I actually signed the paper that is presented to me for me to make a legal document.
To make, to make improvements.
Right.
And if so, then everything, you know, everything will be just like normal. I mean, you know, there won't be any repercussions to the property owners if they're, if the corrections are made.
If they do the things that need to be done to make the property clean up and make it better and more presentable, then there wouldn't be anything else that would be forced against them at that time. But they'd have to make sure that that property meets the standards of the, at the direction of the zoning board. Yeah. All those in favor, indicate, raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Now, Mr. Taylor, did you understand what happened?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I mean, the opportunity's there, and this is not a lecture on my part, okay? I just want you to understand that the opportunity's there for you to do what needs to be done to clean it up, so that fire and buses and everything can get through there, and it's a more presentable piece of property. Okay? And if you have any questions, any concerns, I tell you this, you can contact Mr. Rogers, and I'm sure that they'll let you know what's going on, okay? All right?
And I would make that road the very first priority.
Yeah, make the road the priority, and then work from the front to the back. Okay? Do it the reversal way, okay? All right? Thank you, sir. Item number, the 134 Fire Lane, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, that we table 134 Fire Lane until our next meeting, which is June-
June 7th.
June 7th.
June 7th.
June, okay, June 7th. At which time, we can revisit the situation, which, in my opinion, would give the property owner, you know, since he has not legally owned the property, but a short period of time, basically a month, that that would give, you know, that would give the property owner some, some time to make improvements, and try to avoid an abate, you know, an abatement At that, like I say, and at that time, revisit this. No, because I, you know, I think these gentlemen, I, you know, I think and I hope that they'll, you know, they'll do what they've said that they'll do, and we can revisit it next month and deal with it then.
All right, the motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate, raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. And you got the message of what we expect, and you take care of it, just like we told Mr. Taylor there. Okay? All right? All right, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Item number two on the agenda is a public hearing, conveyance of property to Paragon Films by Alexander County, Mr. David Eisenhower, Economic Development Director. And at this time, gentlemen, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, I make a motion that we open the public hearing pertaining to the Economic Development Corporation's recommendation.
The motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. All those in favor indicate, raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. David Eisenhower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. As noted, this is a public hearing regarding the potential transfer of approximately twenty-five acres of county-owned property to Paragon Films. This public hearing has been duly advertised as required and is in accordance with General Statute 158-7-1. The site, as noted, is located at White Plains Road, near the intersection of Highway 90, and it is adjacent to the Alexander Industrial Park. Paragon Films is offering $600,000 for this particular site. In determining whether or not you accept this offer, you can also consider that the county, if the transfer is made, will receive future property taxes for any construction or any project that goes on on this property. It should also be considered that Paragon Films has always paid wages that are above the county average wage, and it, and would be expected to continue that on any project that might be constructed on this site. If you approve this transfer tonight, it will be subject to the successful completion of a sales contract between Paragon Films and Alexander County. And of course, it would be our recommendation that you approve this transfer tonight, subject to that sales agreement. Now, have with me tonight, Mr. Brandon Cale, who is plant manager for Paragon Films, and he's gonna come up and just give you a very brief description of what they intend.
Good afternoon, or evening now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Paragon has been growing since I joined them back in 2010. First came here to Alexander County in 2005, and I luckily snuck in the door in 2010, and since then, they've been expanding ever since. Presently, what we're looking at is, we have just about reached, if you noticed, the shipping docks out at the end of, end of the land, and we're getting ready to tack on another expansion on the existing building, and that's just basically gonna lock us out for the land that we have to expand. What we are faced with is a, basically a balance between actual finished goods, skid production versus manufacturing. So we can fill up a warehouse fairly quickly, but we need that space along with the manufacturing space. So what we're looking at with this property is to relocate our warehousing operation to this property, which would allow us to open up the whole building of our existing building for manufacturing. Automatically, what we're looking at would be an initial, initial building, just to shift our warehousing over. That would open the door to go ahead and put another additional manufacturing line on order. Long-term, looking at this with what this really does open up for us, would basically double our current blueprint as far as operations or manufacturing capacity, which is majorly significant. That would be double the people we currently have, double the production we currently do. So that's not gonna happen in the next year, but long-term down the road, that would be the steps. We have a very, our sales team that we've developed has a very robust pipeline, both current sales and future sales with what they're trying to develop. And because of that, Paragon's been set up in the position to take a very aggressive approach over the next five years. Doing this, what I'm excited about is this, having this property actually opens up the doors to where we get to continue to expand here in North Carolina versus me seeing this go to our other facilities, Washington or Oklahoma. So that's the exciting part for me, is having that opportunity, you can see, continue to see the growth here. So, any questions?
I hope you fill it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say.
And make some more, and fill it up, too.
Yep.
And it's done very, very well since it opened up.
Yes, it has, and I will convey that Paragon has been very pleased with Alexander County and the partnership, as well as the people here locally in the community. We've got some really good people that work there, and they, they allow us to continue to grow with, with their performance, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As this is a public hearing, is any one of y'all, has anything they'd like to say? Commissioners, anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, we'd like to publicly say, again, we have before, that we appreciate the great things that you guys are doing at Paragon, the business that you have, the culture that you have, and the way you treat people and what you do. You're good folks, and we're thankful to have you be part of us here.
Make a motion to close public hearing for Paragon Films.
Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate, raising your right hand. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Make a motion that we accept the bid as recommended by EDC in regards to Paragon purchasing the industrial site on White Plains Church Road.
Motion's made, second. Motion's made, second. Any discussion?
Third.
We got a third. Very good. All those in favor indicate, raising your right hand. Motion carries, thank you very much. Very good, sir. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Item four, 160D zoning ordinance change, oh, I did, I went fast there, excuse me. Item number three, public hearing, Alexander County, 2021, 2022 proposed budget, Mr. French.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed general fund budget for Alexander County for fiscal year 2021-22 totals $45,598,762. Requests from county departments for the upcoming budget year totaled $48,9438. The original general fund budget for this current fiscal year, which is 2021, totaled Currently, the revised county budget stands at $49,82,437. Currently, the revised, uh, county budget stands at $49,82,437. There is no property tax increase proposed in the upcoming, on the proposed budget. There is a 3%. Hickory is proposing a 3% water rate increase in the new budget. This is su- subject to approval of the Hickory City Council. Water connection fees were reduced in June of 2019, and the lower fees are in effect until January of 2022. A $5 increase in both C and D and MSW proposed, is proposed for landfill, uh, because an amount of $180,000 is needed for a new floor at the transfer station. Transfer station was constructed in '96 and '97, and this is the original floor. There have been no landfill fee increases for over 10 years. Also, fee, uh, changes are recommended for EMS management consultants because we are losing money from Medicare, Medicaid, and other insurance companies that we, uh, will not be able to collect. The recommended charges are at 150% of Medicare allowable. Uh, there has been no EMS increase since 2013. Our next step in this process after tonight will be adoption of the budget ordinance on June 7th. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman.
As this is a public hearing, uh, my last, it's a public hearing, but you opened. I don't think I did that, did I?
Nope.
Didn't think so. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the budget.
Make a motion, we have a open public hearing on the 2021-22 budget.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. So is this as a public hearing, Commissioners? And the people in the, in the audience, anyone has anything to say? Now would be your opportunity to speak as it concerns the 2021-22 budget.
Mr. Chairman, I want to say, after taking, after not being on the board for a couple of years, um, that I'm, that I am honestly pleased that we can offer the, the employees of Alexander County a small, you know, increase in pay as well as do some things, um, like add a fifth ambulance, you know, um, and EMS crew to the county, and, um, you know, do some positive things for the county and for, not only, not only, well, for the county employees and also for the county, um, without having to increase taxes in any way. Because when I, when I came on the board the first time, I guess, uh, about six and a half years ago, we were slapped in the face because the county didn't have, we were in, we were not in a good financial position, and we were forced to raise taxes at that time. And it's just nice to know that we can do some things to improve the county, um, and we're able to do that within, you know, wi- within the money that is coming, you know, is, is already slated to come in.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd just say, too, it's, uh, you know, uh, spending money is never a really good thing for me, but you have to keep things going and be able to pay for things. And just as Commissioner Lael stated, I was part of that, uh, tax increase when I first came on. Hadn't really gotten my chair adjusted good, but, uh, you know, we lived through that, and I think that, you know, uh, it's helped a lot of things in the long run. As long as I'm around, I want to make sure we've got money coming in before money goes out somewhat. And, you know, I think, uh, Mr. French has done a good job with the budget and those that have worked on it, uh, you know, to keep things going. Plus, if you just kind of look back at, you know, the projects that we've done, you know, in the last year, water, sewer, and then just some water projects on their own, uh, you know, moving some buildings around, changing some things, you know, adding people here and there. Uh, so I think, I think we've done, done well.
Very good. Thank you. Was this as a public hearing? Anybody, no one else has anything? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing pertaining to the 2021-22 budget.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number four, 160D zoning ordinance changes. Mr. Johnny Ware, Assistant Community and Regional Planning Director with the Western Peamont Council of Governments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having me here today. So, um, this was about two meetings' worth of, of planning board time, um, and, and it's a lot of material. I tried to, what I tried to do is, is provide a Cliff Notes version, and I'm gonna try to get all of it in, uh, to about 10 minutes. So, um, of course, if you guys have questions at any point during now and the next meeting, welcome to call me at the cog anytime to, to answer those questions as you, as you review the material. I will say that this is more of a, um, uh, exercise and, and trying to, um, clarify a lot of things, and housecleaning, and, uh, trying to make, make sure people are doing the same thing across the state. It doesn't really affect any of your actual, uh, land use as it is in, in the ordinance itself. It really is just administrative issues and, and definitions and things like that. So, it doesn't change your actual zoning of any of your, of your land. So, um, uh, to get started, um, I'll just go through, basically, uh, your, your previous Chapter 153A development regulations, um, have been moved into 160D along with the local government or municipality, uh, development regulations that were in 160A. So they combine the two, and again, it's, it's really a lot of housecleaning. So if you're looking at this page, and I'm, I'm gonna go through these pretty quick, so that the, uh, Chapter 160D zoning ordinance changes, number one. You can see number one there, that blue language has been added. So anywhere you see the blue, that's, that's new language. Number two, and of course, you know, as you go through here, you'll see that a lot of the citations have been added. Throughout the document, anywhere that, well, it, it referenced 153A, it's been changed to 160D with the new citation. Um, if there are any things, uh, any citations left that are 160A, they have more to do with police powers rather than development regulations. So it's really only development regulations got moved to 160D. Uh, number two, um, the, the zoning map reference, this is, uh, really about, um, having a maintain, or the change here is that the zoning map has to be maintained for public inspection at all time, times, and you have to keep an updated, uh, map. So, uh, this also means that you're supposed to keep older maps, um, on display. So, my, my recommendation would be, uh, as years go on, um, if you have changes during the course of a year, you adopt a new zoning map, and you have those, all of them available for display. Um, that's so that developers can come back in and see what, uh, uh, the previous zoning was for the property, and this is kind of a new thing. So, um, that's a big one to pay attention to, because that's not, not been normal practice for everyone. Uh, number three, because, um, across the state, we were all using different terminology, like conditional use permits, special use permits, conditional use zoning, special use zoning. They wanted everyone to use the same language. Number three, so, uh, everyone in our region uses, have, have been using conditional use permits as the term for this, for the, for the quasi judicial improvement of, of a permit. Now we call those special use permits. So, anywhere in your ordinance that it was called a conditional use permits, it's now called a special use permits, or permit. Again, number four, all the citations have been changed. Uh, number five, definitions had to be added. These were the state definitions that were required. They included administrative decision, determination, developer, development, development approval, development regulation, dwelling, evidentiary hearing, legislative decision, and legislative hearing. Number six, uh, conflict of interest language. So you guys have been probably, probably, um, using this, yeah, anyway. If, if you had a tie to someone, you, you probably recused yourself from making a decision. Well, now those, um, you know, at, at what point you recuse yourself has been defined in, in your relationship to those people. So number six has been added, uh, for the Board of Adjustment. Number seven, uh, this says that the Board of Adjustment will use quasi judicial procedures. Of course, that's something they've always been required to do, but now it's just written in as, as, as the language. Uh, number eight, um, this has to do with special use permits, formerly conditional use permits. Uh, this is the only thing in this document that's really not required. So, everything in here is, is a requirement of 160D. This is, this falls into the may change range, which is, um, means it's, it's a new tool that you can use. Um, and speaking with the planning board, uh, they approved use of the minor modifications. And basically, what this means is, is, is a permit goes through the Board of Adjustment and is approved, uh, usually you can't make changes to it. But now staff, or administratively, staff can go in and make a minor modification to it. So, minor modification can include reconfiguring parking design, changing landscaping or buffering arrangements, or slightly altering road and lot configurations for development, development that's already gone through the full approval process. Uh, they're limited to, uh, they can't be in change of use, they can't increase the impacts generated, uh, they meet all your other ordinance requirements, and landscape adjustments can only be 10% of the required landscaping. So, uh, this just would be used in the case where maybe you're requiring a buffer of a certain length and size, and maybe due to the topography, like maybe there's a steep cliff, maybe you can't use, or you can't have an extended buffer that long. So, staff would be able to go out and say, okay, I, I can see the reasoning behind this. We won't make him go through the full approval process to, to come into compliance with that. Um, and again, that, that's not required. It's, it's something that you would make a, that decision on, as to whether or not you would want to continue with that. Uh, number nine is just the appeal process. Uh, number 10 is, uh, the zoning off, enforcement officers, uh, conflict of interest, so administrative approvals. Uh, number 11, 11 is the subsection referring to the permission to inspect work. Uh, number 12 is, uh, new vesting language. So basically, what this says is zoning permits now have one year after issuance. If it is a site-specific plan, uh, then, uh, they have, uh, two years but not exceeding five, and then for multi-phase development, which contains 100 or more acres, um, actually that should be 25 now. They actually changed that on us, um, in the second, but I'll, I'll make that change. So that should say, be 25 right there. Uh, but a multi-phase development, which is 25 acres or more, uh, that, that has seven years vesting. Number 13, revocation of development approvals. Basically, this says that, uh, revocation has to go through the same process as it was approved by. So if it's an administrative staff-level zoning permit, then the staff can do the revocation. If it is a special use permit, then it has to go back through the public hearing process. Uh, number 14 is, uh, basically, a written notice determination is now required. Usually, when someone comes in for a zoning permit, you give them a zoning permit, that's their approval. Now, if you're, if you're turning them down, uh, you have to give them written notice of why you've turned them down, and that they are turned down. So, in the past, we, we didn't, a lot of planners didn't do that. We just gave out, um, the zoning permit. And it's also, determinations also include subdivision plaits, and any time you're given any type of decision.
Can we ask questions now, or?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Can we go back to 13?
Yes.
So if, if we have a, a developer that decides that they're gonna go rogue and not follow the plan, that has to come back to us before that development can be stopped?
If, if it's a Board of Adjustment, um, uh, Board of Adjustment's the planning board, right?
Yes.
Oh, right. Okay. I got you. So, yeah, you, you guys have a, um, you're, you're different in that, in that respect. So, it does not, uh, keep him from, from putting out a stop work order. That's a difference. So he can, they can still stop the work, but for the permit to be completely pulled, it does have to go back through a hearing process.
But it can be stopped?
Yes. Yeah. It doesn't have, it doesn't require the permit. That, that's, that would be separate than, um, than the billage to go in and tell them to stop work. Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number 15, um, so the, uh, all amendments to the zoning ordinance, and this is something that most, most local governments have been putting into action anyway, uh, they have to go to the planning board now. So, any amendments to the zoning ordinance do go through the planning board, which is probably how you've been operating anyway, but now it's written in.
Logical.
That doesn't include your, you know, town, or your county, um, police power ordinances, like nuisance ordinance and things like that. That is only for zoning. Um, number 16, uh, this is the conflict of interest for planning board. Um, this also refers to, um, the, uh, the, I guess the big change here is, is for your notices for amendments, and it has to do with the budding, uh, properties. Even if it's, so if it's separated by a street or railroad, uh, you don't count those essentially. So in the past, they say it's a budding or 100 feet away. Now, if there's a road in between, even if that's a really wide right of way, you act as if that's not there when you determine who receives a notice. And, uh, number 17, uh, you, this is about the plan consistency statement that you have to make any time you're adopting or rejecting a zoning or, or map amendment. Um, so you can say with, now, you know, you, you say it's consistent with your land use plan, but you can also say it's inconsistent. You can still approve a zoning amendment, even if it's inconsistent with your land use plan, but if you approve it, then you have to go back in and change your land use plan. So the land use map, um, would update along with your zoning map. Does that make sense?
So if you approve zoning for something that's in a, not been zoned for that, then you have to go back, you can approve it, but then you gotta go back and change it?
Well, okay, so you have your zoning map, which, you know, is the ordinance, uh, you guys adopted as, as, um, the regulation map, right? And then you have a comprehensive plan, which lays out your future land use, which is required, and any time you make a decision to change a zoning map, you have to refer back to the land use map. In this case, because you're, the state started to require the consistency, consistency statement states that the zoning changes are consistent with your land use map, um, now you can just say, yeah, it's not, it, it's not consistent, but if you do make that decision, then you have to change the land use map to correspond to the change in the zoning map.
It'd be a good time to update your land use map.
Yeah. Right. Let's see. Where was I? And then we, number 18, we have conflict of interest for members of the governing body. That's you guys. And, let's see. This is the, uh, number 19 is to, uh, this, there are procedures upon the discovery of a violation. It's just the, the language is required. And that's it for the zoning ordinance. The next section is your subdivision change, ordinance changes. So starting with number one, big change there is that, um, the subdivision definition has changed, and number five has been added. So you guys basically had the correct subdivision definition in there. Uh, we just had to make one minor change. Then we have improvement installation or guarantees. This language isn't, um, required unless you require the guarantees. So you also have the procedures, um, for the, okay, so number three, then you have your improvement installation or guarantees. That language on the second page of the subdivision, what it says, duration, extension, release, amount, timing, coverage, legal responsibilities, multiple guarantees and exclusion, that's all that states required language for the, um, improvement guarantees. And so that's been added, or performance guarantees. Um, number three, variances. That language, uh, is, um, not 160D. It was just, uh, needed to be updated based on older state, uh, statute changes. And that's it. That's it for the subdivision changes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any questions?
Good information.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for coming over.
Thank you.
Item number five, North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal's Grant Recipients. Island number five, North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal's Grant Recipients, Mark Earl, Alexander County Fire Marshal Assistant, Emergency Management Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Last Monday, May 17th, the North Carolina Office of the State Fire Marshal granted recipients here in our county, seven out of the eight fire departments received the grant. The grant included were Central Alexander, Ellendale Community, Hidden Heart Fire, Stony Point, Sugarloaf, Vastite, and Wittenburg. Bethlehem did apply, but was turned down, lack of funds, according to the letter that they received, for a total of $114,154.32 for our county departments. Talking with the departments, the fire chiefs, a lot of them are buying gear to replace old, worn-out gear, some water supply hose, the five-inch diameter hose, thermal imaging cameras to help locate victims and to help with the firefighting techniques, communications equipment such as new pagers, radios, things like that. I'm really proud of our departments for taking the initiative to fill out these grants, and I appreciate what they do for us every day.
It was a home run, all of them but one. Couldn't believe this, and the state says we don't have enough money to give the other one any money. I thought that was a little bit.
Same thing happened last year. Well, no, Ellendale didn't apply for it last year. They took their money and fixed their parking lot with it. So, seven departments got the grant last year also.
Yeah, it's a nice amount of money coming in, $114,000. That's pretty good.
Very good.
And I'm sure they'll spend it wisely and well, and just as you said, I appreciate those guys being out there, being on the end of that hose whenever there's something on fire, taking care of us, and keeping our insurance rates down. That's, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Earl. Appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir.
Island number eight, Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. Mr. Gary Herman, Public Information Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We're going to speak tonight about a program that can help some of our citizens save a little money on broadband. So, the FCC is now accepting applications for the Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. Eligible households could receive a monthly discount on the cost of their broadband, and they can also get a $100 discount on like a computer, or a laptop, or a tablet. It's a $3.2 billion program. Like I said, it provides a discount of up to $50 a month for broadband service. Of course, there are some eligibility criteria, we'll get into that in just a second. The main internet address that people need to remember is getemergencybroadband.org. That's where you can go and find out more and apply. And so, who's eligible for this program? Household is eligible if one member of the household meets at least one of the criteria below. Okay, first thing is your income is at or below 135% of the federal poverty guidelines, or your household experienced a substantial loss of income due to job loss or furlough since February 29th of 2020, or one member of your household participates in any one of these government benefit programs. They include Lifeline, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, which is SNAP, Medicaid, Federal Public Housing Assistance, Veterans Pension and Survivors Benefit, Supplemental Security Income, free and reduced school lunch or breakfast for 2019, 2020, or the 2020, 21 school year, and finally, if you received a federal Pell Grant. The program will end six months after the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services declares the pandemic over, so we can hardly wait. But we still want to tell our citizens about this program so we can help them save some money on their broadband. Open Broadband has put in an application for, to be a provider for this. I don't know if they've been approved yet. Last time I heard, they had not, but they're in the application process. Spectrum is on there, AT&amp;T, all the big guys are on there, so. And one item to note, providers must notify their customers at least 30 days before the discount ends. That is gonna, that is gonna go away. So, again, you can learn more at fcc.gov/broadbandbenefit, or you can go to getemergencybroadband.org. As a side note, the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, they're doing a survey right now, and they want all people to go on there and do the survey so they can see who has good broadband and what their speeds are, things like that. So, go to ncbreadband.gov/survey to take that. So, you've got a flyer in your packet, I believe, with more information.
Very good.
So, getemergencybroadband.org.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Thanks.
Deal. Thanks. Island number seven, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number 79, Survey 2, Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment 79 is to adjust ESS budget for Western Piedmont Council of Government budget revision to the HCCBG funds for fiscal year 21. Budget Amendment number 80 is to increase the multi-year grant project budget for additional expenses to be paid by the industry, and that's for Industrial Temple Waste Water and Buildings Renovation Project Fund. Number 81 is to budget for closeout of the Borealis compounds, one North Carolina grant project. The project is complete, and there will be no additional grant expenses or revenues. Number 82 is to increase the library budget for the American Library Association Grant Libraries Transforming Communities, and that's the amount of $3,000. And that's all the budget amendments we have for the night. Mr. Chairman, Board?
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 79 through 82 as given.
Do you have a motion to approve? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you. Island number eight, Mr. French, County Business, County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things to mention. One, during the budget process, one of the questions was asked of the number of agencies that deal with food assistance in Alexander County. And in your report, there are six that deal with food. For budgetary purposes, we can, we have an amount of money set up in contingency, and we could address that at a later time, but just so you know that there are, there are six agencies included. There's also some budgetary information enclosed in the manager's report, so just bring that to your attention, because I know we have some other things tonight. There's two house bills, just to call to your attention. There's a house bill that deals with, it's a bill to be entitled, an act to create a state building co-permit technician certification, which has just been introduced, and that will require staff in the Building Inspections Department to be trained and tested. And also, we have been talking about the American Rescue Plan funding. The state is going to have a program in broadband and water and sewer that will allow us to make, get more out, more bang out of our bucks, more out of our money. And so, once that's approved, we'll get more details about it, but that, that way we could make our money go further, and can do more water and more broadband in the county. So, Jamie, I think I sent you a copy of it, and if you don't have one, we'll gladly send you another. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. The consent agenda? entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given.
Motion's made, it's our second. Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor indicate raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you. And now, we will adjourn the County Commissioners Meeting, the Board of County Commissioners, Consolidated Human Services Board Meeting, will now come to order. We welcome you here, and at the beginning of this thing, we have a public comment. Did we have anyone to sign up? No one signed up. Very good, then. This time then, I'd like to call on Leigh and Whitney, our Consolidated Health Services Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm actually gonna turn it over to give you your COVID update, and we hope this may be the last one, and as things are improving, I'm gonna turn it over to Bill.
Good evening. I'm here to give you a quick COVID update. I'm excited to say that on a meeting that I do every week, the state said that we are at the lowest rate of infection since June of 2020. So, that's good news, because hopefully we are continuing to see a decrease and getting life back to normal.
We as county or state?
State, state. But county's following suit as well.
Okay.
So, as of today, we have 4,407 cases of COVID. We have, we still have 86 deaths. We've not had a death since the beginning of March. We only have two people hospitalized, so we also saw a decrease in hospitalizations as well. All of our outbreaks have been closed, and we're just cleaning that up through the state, through their program, but all of those have been closed as well. Our testing still continues on Monday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. We no longer, we no longer have them drive-through. They can come and park, and we can still come outside. We have Moderna and Pfizer on hand, and I think people's, Town and Country still has the Johnson &amp; Johnson, so anybody can get any of the vaccine they want in the county. All they have to do is call. Pfizer did decrease the ages to, from 12 to 15, and so now younger, younger kids can get that vaccine as well. We also moved, thank goodness, to new masking guidelines, and social distancing has gone away. So, we're excited to see these changes. I don't know about anybody else, but the health department staff are thankful for some of these slower days to actually do things that we've not done in a whole year, so.
What's it like to be in the health department again?
Oh, gosh, we don't even know. Actually, one of my staff members did say, oh, gosh, I almost want to go back to COVID. I mean, because it's stressful, you know, flip-flopping and changing gears, but yeah. It's been a year.
I think you made it through it. That's good.
We have, yes, yes.
I know, I know the whole COVID pandemic has probably made folks expand further than they ever thought they could in different fields and positions they're in, but I think they found out that they could do it, and that's really what they're there for.
Definitely, definitely. And just knowing that we need to cross-train everybody, because there's times that you may be down staff, and you have to fill in, and some people, that's the only person that does that job. So, I think COVID really, really opened our eyes as far as like continuing on in the future.
Cross-training is very important. One of the best things we ever did at work, and all you gotta do is walk in and sit down at my desk, anybody there in our office can walk in and sit at my desk and do my job, and keep going, and it makes it so much easier. It really does. And I can walk in and do anybody else's job, so everyone in there is cross-trained. We did that about 10 years ago, and it's really worked. Anybody comes in, you, they gotta learn everybody's job, and they hate it, you know, because it's a lot of work.
Yeah.
I mean, to get it implemented and get everybody where you want them, but it's really, really nice when something happens, and don't lose a beat.
Yeah.
It really is.
I don't want this to sound bad, but this could be, you know, COVID, the things that our emergency personnel and health department and everyone's went through, real learning curve here, because the next disease that comes through may be 10 times worse.
Yeah.
And that can kind of show you where the chinks are in the armor, and build on those areas.
Yep, definitely. Well, and just knowing that somebody might be out for two weeks. I mean, whoever would have thought that would happen? And it's half your staff, so this definitely was a realization of the importance of having backups for continuity of care. Anything else? Well, thank you for letting me come.
Your next slide is cost settlement. This is your, this is your training slide. Can't remember because of COVID, but every year we cost-settle our Medicaid clients, all of our Medicaid services, rather, and so we're always a year behind. So, you see it says July 1st, 19 through 6:30 of 2020, and I broke them down because total is $443,460 that will be coming in the next, we hope, before the end of this budget year, so it's easier to reconcile, but we'll take it whenever it gets here. But I showed you where the, where it was from. Most is from medical services, most of it is our primary care, and dental's included in that. Dental is a big part of our cost settlement. Going forward, they're talking about not cost settling clinic services, but we would still cost-settle dental and behavioral health, so just FYI. And I gave you the 18, 19, and 17, 18, just so you could compare, because we really have increased who we serve and how many people we serve in our county, really with the same staff we've always had. So, you know, cost settling with, with COVID is gonna be interesting, so we'll see next year. I gave you the next slide, budget overview, but I, I won't hit much of that, because I know you've already seen the budget, you've had meetings. I just wanted to point out a few of the areas that was the reason for an increase for public health. And lastly, I'm, I'm going to, I was hoping for us to really get to talk about the, on the next slide, Chad, the North Carolina Clean Water State Revolving Fund. I did include in your packet the memorandum of understanding. It'll look like this. It's, it's your preference if you would like to read it. I have went very in-depth with it, and before, you know, we always have to do the agenda quite a bit ahead of time. So, we had just got the contract in, I wanted to get it to you as soon as possible, so I put it on the agenda with the information you have in front of you, but as I went through this contract a couple of times, I had a lot of questions that we have went back to the state to ask for clarification, because they call it a grant opportunity for low-income families. In a nutshell, we are one of two counties in North Carolina that was given this opportunity. The state wants to pilot a new program to improve some of our septic systems. We do have families that are low-income that have difficulty repairing septic systems, installing septic systems, et cetera, expanding septic systems. But when you read this memorandum of understanding, it's more like on the right side, that's more of a loan program. What they're wanting us to do is the county to be a pass-through for funds, and the, the person would have a zero-interest loan, but they would have to pay it back. So, my first question was, the MOU talks about if they default, but it doesn't say what really happens, like is the county responsible at that point, or is a lien, you know, what happens at that point? So, we have not heard back. The state said it may be a month or more. There's been some change, changes in Raleigh with management that could give us those answers. So, I, I still think it's important for you to have heard of it, so that when we talk about it next meeting, you will be prepared to make a decision. I'm always looking for ways to help our community and our citizens, so we did feel like there was probably 15 to 25 families out there. Usually, there's quite a few. We get called when there's issues, usually it's the neighbor, and then we run into situations when the families just purely doesn't have funds to pay for, I mean, some of these repairs can get expensive when you get into septic systems. So, it sounds like a great program. We would, again, be that pass-through, so a lien would be put on that property until it was paid back. There would be a fair amount of accounting work that our finance department would have to do, so that's another consideration, and it would put a burden there. But I'll bring more back to you when we have some of those answers, because I don't even think you can, you can't make a informed decision at this point. The program has been done in Virginia and has been successful. The point of that- The point of that paying it back is that as they pay it back, you can use those funds to help the next family. So the theories are good. And that's all on the public health side. I'm going to turn it over to Linda Clements, the Assistant DSS Director, to do that part, unless you have questions, sorry about that. I know you've had a long meeting. Linda's up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey, how are you? So the next slide. Most of my presentation, I just kind of some updates on what's been going on in DSS. Want to let you know that even though COVID, we're starting to recover, a lot of the procedures that prevent us from terminating services are still rolling. So we are still extending and maintaining people on Medicaid and food stamps, even without them providing information that they're still qualified. In fact, we're not allowed to terminate, terminate some at this time. They are recertified for another six months. And that, we expect to go through almost the end of the year. No direct impact on the budget or county, but just so you know that for our citizens. As far as the.
There's an impact.
Pardon?
There's an impact.
Well, yes, there is. I didn't say that accurately. Nothing that we have to, yeah. Medicaid transformation, that was delayed. It was supposed to, the enrollment by the recipients was supposed to end May 15th. They ended up extending it for an additional week. Across the state, as of 5/21, there were 15% in Alexander County that had enrolled versus 11% at the state. So that's up the numbers that I had in the presentation. It still did not extend that July 1st, that the managed care program starts. And, but they did delay the tailored plan for foster kids for another year to 2023. There were, the county DSS departments were quite, what's the right word? Unimpressed with the tailored plans that had been proposed at the state for the special population. So there were a lot of challenges brought up, and they did delay that transition. Very happy to say that we are finally getting, we hope, we're going to maintain fully-staffed in the adult Medicaid. We have three new workers that have come on and just finishing training. So that, for us, that's very exciting. It's been a very challenging year in that particular department. In adult and child protective services, we were planning to have an April class for MAP. Unfortunately, we did not have enough people that, again, were able to come to the MAP training class. We are using our one-on-one deciding-together program to license about four, three to four families. The other couple are being delayed until August. We hopefully have enough to have a class. It's really not the best way to, to do the training. The reason the deciding-together was provided for these families is they're unable to come to MAP. They remained, one was an EMS worker, so they couldn't make that commitment to coming the one night a week. So this is us accommodating schedule, but the learning is not quite as great when it's not in the group session. We continue to have challenges with our youth and adult placements. I have in another slide, some things we're doing to overcome that. We did partner with the GAL program to hold a Prevent Child Abuse Program on August 22nd. That was successful. And I would like to invite any of you, if you're available, to come to our, what we're now calling our Golden Opportunity Day on June 14th. That'll be at Friendship Church from 1:00 to 3:00. And we're going to talk about some of the services at DSS, the senior center, along with, we've asked Sheriff Bowman to talk about fraud and exploitation for education. And we're going to have other information from legal aid and, and celebrate our volunteers. We've got some great volunteers in that program. Other things in social services, we are continuing our work for emergency planning. I get the opportunity the next three days to be in the ISC 300 training at the, the Emergency Operations Center. There's a, I don't know, almost 20 of us participating in that. We did ask for some funding in the, in the budget for crisis response, a few thousand dollars there. Safety plan, programs, we are continuing to improve our safety preparedness at the DSS itself. We have our EAP was planned. We have scheduled for the week of July 7th to have office and field situation awareness training from the sheriff department, just so we are better able to assess a situation and prevent a serious situation. And then after that, we're looking at the active shooter training onsite. We also participated in the Spring Fling Event. That was at the United Methodist Church on the 15th, and that's the picture we have there. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here. I think you're going to have a lot of time to discuss, and I've already seen the budget. Just wanted to go over, you know, some of our challenges. DSS just doesn't have a way to bring in as much revenue as we spend on salaries and expenses, because the rate of reimbursement isn't 100% for many of our programs. So this just kind of gives an overview. For example, for Medicaid, we, we run around 70% reimbursement for their billable time. CPS workers, it's around 66%, but that funding's capped. So we get at one point in the year where we've used up all of what's available, and then we end up being all county money. The same happens in a couple of our other programs. We, this is just the big ones here. The APS, Adult Services, we average around 66% reimbursement. And for our meals program and that Western Piedmont Council of Government funding, it's around 60, 59, 60% that we get reimbursed. And just a reminder, unfortunately, that when we have new hires come on, and we have that time without a vacancy, and then the training time, none of that's reimbursable. So we work really hard in some of our budget plans, or how's to, how to make sure we're not having turnover, or at least reduce that potential. The other reason our budget, we had to, had a little more challenge is thank you, as you said earlier, the COLA increase is greatly appreciated. But it does make it a little harder to do everything we need to do and maintain our, our costs as much as we can. Some of our meal costs are going up, where our reimbursement's going down. Or we've got increased requirement for that funding. Our mandated services, example for guardianship. Our number of guardianship cases has almost doubled this year, court-ordered guardianship cases, and we're accountable to making sure their needs are met. And sometimes there's, and there is no funding for that program from the state or federal level. This next page talks about some of our actions to offset. One of the things is we are transitioning a position to a person doing a more focused training. We've got feedback from our staff that left, that lack of consistent training was one of the issues. We also want to do some of the cross-training that was talked about earlier. We, it really does pay off having people cross-trained that do not only applications but reviews. And if one area, the other, has a break in volume, we can switch people around and maintain billable costs, or services, sorry. We are beginning to do kind of some outreach in the community. I think our outreach with the Adult Services Program. We're hoping that that might improve our, and community participation and buy in more volunteers, and potentially even some grant or donation opportunities to help offset expenditures. We are working directly with the prison to make sure they understand the, how guardianship's determined. It's really clear in the 2015 finding that the county of, with responsible jurisdiction is the county where the conviction took place, not the county they're incarcerated in. So we're trying to make sure that people, if they just, they end up in prison in our county, that doesn't mean we should be accountable for helping place them and get them service when they're released. So, and the prison's been very open to, to understanding that, that policy. And then working with Vaya Health to be more active on our kids' and guardians' needs. In fact, I had a conference call today. Vaya Health is working on a way to have one of their staff on our site a day a week, so we can partner better in making sure that services are provided, and we're more proactive in getting them continued services and not having disruption in their placements or services. Any questions? I'm trying to wash through.
That'd be really good, that piece, that'd be great.
With the Vaya? Yes. The meeting went really well. And they're very, very open to that suggestion. So they've already done that, and I think it was Madison County? And they said it's worked out really well, so. And this is just kind of a quick overview of where our big, most high-cost expenses are. Of course, salaring wages right at the top. This next group of expenses, I'm not sure I have the right term in there. Expenses with significant match, it means the ones that the federal and state government pretty much pay a large portion of it. So it shows in expense, but we're getting 100% back. For example, for LEAP, the state or feds pay. So it shows on both sides of the balance sheet. In other words, both as a expense as in a revenue. And then some other significant expenses. So that just kind of to give you a feel for where our main hits are hitting. Does that make sense, sort of questions?
It makes sense, but that, does that, that math doesn't add up, does it?
It's not 100% total, which part?
Well, total expense is $7,373,595, but when you add those items down through there.
No, it's not all-inclusive. You're accurate, it's not all-inclusive. So it's the most significant and the big significant expenses, but it's not every expense. So there's odds and ends, like building maintenance and things like that that aren't on here. We just hit the big, big buckets. So yes, you're right, the math isn't totally there. If you have more questions, I'm.
I mean, even just the salary part there, the salary and the benefits is. Before you even go to those other things, it's way up there. Six, seven, hey, that's a bunch. So that, that top number is way.
Is everything, yes. And of the $7 million, about $5 million's salary in wages, group insurance, and then the other $2 million falls into these other pots, is kind of the main impact of this.
Thank you.
Is there, is there a big inconsistency that I need to?
No.
Okay, okay. The next sheet just kind of shows our overall revenue, as you can see, is considerably less, and comes to the total county cost of the $3.7 million. Just a quick reminder, though, that this investment does get us back over $50 million, state and federal funds, through Medicaid, food stamps, daycare subsidies, energy and crisis funds. So it, it, we are investing money in our community, and we are getting that back to our local providers and/or to the families themselves. Any questions on that? I know it really quickly, because I know you've got a lot more details, but. Okay.
Well, you're good, go ahead.
Yeah. The last, I just have two more pages. One here is just a quick update. We, we are, you know, ranked on our MOU performance in these areas. So I just wanted to give you a quick update of how we're doing. Last time I reported to you, we had two areas in the red, one of which was the very first one. We've, we were at 80%. We've got that back up to 95% and addressed that. Unfortunately, we have one area here we've dropped down to 63%. But our third area was, I think, under timely processing of FNS applications. We were a little under the 95%, but we've got them all back up again. So we work really diligently to meet all these MOU requirements, and this is point in time. So over the year, we're doing well on that. The last thing is I just wanted to let you know about an upcoming educational opportunity, if you are interested. It's the Essentials of Social Services for Governing Boards. And just wanted to let you know about it coming up in August. And we can, we've talked about different ways to maybe get that recorded if you're interested, or if you guys wanted to participate directly. Just wanted to let you know about it.
Very good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
A question on the placement? I guess, you know, now that we are, we're the DSS board now in our function, with hard-to-place children. Can you tell me how that process works?
It varies by child and by need. That's part of why it's so challenging. Typically, if, I'll say, if a child comes into custody, first thing we do is we try to find one of our local Alexander County homes to see if they are able to take them. If not, then we get on the phone, and we have a, approximately, I think it's a 13-page list of all the private agencies all across the state, that we get on the phone and start calling them one at a time to see if they can take our children. What we find out is it's usually relatively easy to place babies and young children. Where it gets really different, difficult is we have, like, a 14-year-old boy right now, has no mental health, no significant behavioral issues. And we ended up last month having to put him in a group home, because not a single family foster home would take him across the whole state, which is a high cost to us. But it also is not the best placement for that child. They'd be much better off.
It's a high cost to us, is that, is that a child that is, comes into care in Alexander County?
These are all children in, in our custody, yes.
So then, at that point, they have to go into a group home, and we have to pay that monthly fee, correct?
Instead of a fee for a 14-year-old of around $1,600, it's around $4,500 a month.
So if, if they can go into an adoptive placement, it's $1,400 a month for a 14-year-old?
It's by age. It's 1433 if it's from 0 to 5, and then it's 1581 or something around that, from 6 to 12, and 13 to 18 is 1684 or something like that. That's close.
Now, is that into a foster home?
That is a private foster home. If it's a tailored, Alexander County foster home, the board rates are lower. It's $475.
Yeah, because we.
For 0 to 5, it's 581 and 6.
400 and, yeah, because we foster, we have adopted children.
So that's, the foster home gets that same payment, even if it's through a private agency. That additional $1,000 goes to that private firm who's paying for the licensing, the monitoring process. So the foster family gets that same payment, whether they're through directly our, one of our families or a private agency. We just have to pay that extra overhead to that agency that finds the license.
What you're using the term here, I'm not sure that I'm following.
A private agency could be, let me see, I'm trying to draw black of names. Christian, there's a bunch of, agencies can decide to go into and incorporate to license and manage and foster homes. And that's, so they create an agency.
And we pay them $1,000 more a month than we pay Josh?
We pay the agency that much money. They pay the foster family that they have licensed and that they're monitoring, and they have their overhead the same amount, but then they take that overhead for their, for their costs to.
Why would we do that?
Why wouldn't, wait, what do you mean? We don't have, I'm not explaining it maybe very well.
I guess, I did, we go first with the placement.
We always try Alexander County first. If none of them will take, then we go on the phone, and we start calling all those places. Where it gets complicated is these are, that's just your children with no mental health diagnosis that are obviously traumatized and have challenges for parenting potentially, but have not had a history or any diagnosis of mental health or juvenile justice involvement. That's when they start escalating up into Level 2, Level 3, or Level 4 placements. So, oops, and that's another list of, the payment's different, because then if they've got the leveled placement that a mental health professional has said they're at one of these different levels, then it goes into the Medicaid process paying. And Medicaid pays a lot of the overhead when it becomes like a Level 2, 3, or 4. And, but it's that much harder to find a home. Level 2 is what's a therapeutic foster home. We don't have any in the county. That all goes through private agencies. So private agencies typically have both a family foster home and therapeutic foster homes. It's still a family setting, but those, that child's got a little hi, higher behavioral needs. So those foster parents have additional training. They get a little bit higher board payment. And Medicaid pays that differential between the regular foster care and the Level 2 therapeutic. Level 3 and Level 4 is when you're talking about mental health group homes, Level 3 and Level 4 is when you're talking about mental health group homes, or Level 4 is a PRTF, like essentially a locked facility. When the behavior becomes that high, most of those go, they have a crisis, they end up in the hospital, and then they get discharged to the PRTF. And the hospital usually helps us, but there are times when we've got children sitting in hospitals waiting for a placement and where we, there is not a single PRTF that has a bed. Some of those end up going out of state.
How many of those cases did we get?
The Level 4, I think we have three or four out of our 60 kids that are at that level now. That's high. It's not usually that high. It's usually a couple.
This is-
It's meant to be a short-term thing. They're usually there most six months, and then they try to step them back down. Unfortunately, I think sometimes they get stepped down a little too early and they just start to cycle.
This is just, and I don't mean to change subject, but, so you hope to have MAP classes, which I'm very familiar with because I actually took them, when I, when we were first licensed as foster parents, I was on the county commission. So, we had to license through, well, excuse me, when, let me rephrase that. When we were first licensed as foster parents, we licensed through Caldwell County because my wife called, and this has been a long time ago, so don't take this the wrong way. My wife called Alexander County and she was told that they did, that we did not need additional foster parents.
Oh, my.
So, we were licensed through Caldwell County. I was then, then on the commission, and we remained licensed through Caldwell County. But long story short, we took MAP classes in Caldwell County. We have also taken MAP classes in Alexander County.
Okay.
Because we let our certification go, thinking we were finished. Well, guess what? We were relicensed, and actually, we have a nine-month-old at our house right now that we're debating whether to relicense or not. That is a kinship placement of our two, of our three-year-old that, that we have adopted. We do have children that we have fostered that we do not, you know, that we did not adopt because they were able to go back to their family or someone. But my question is, what is being done to try to, you know, you said they were hoping to have MAP classes in February. They got pushed back, pushed up to April. Now, they're not having, for those of you who don't know, MAP classes are the classes that parents take to be certified as foster parents. My wife is certified by the state to teach those classes. Caldwell County asked her to do that.
Excellent.
Won't get into that. But what's being done to try to recruit foster parents other than the 18-by-24 chloroplast signs on the side of the road that are actually in violation of the county sign ordinance? Just asking. And I don't mean it as smart, but just asking.
And I support that. Leanne can tell you that I've got two things on my list that I think we are not doing well at, and recruiting foster parents is one of them. We have not used any, at least enough ingenuity in reaching out, partnering with faith community. There's a whole lot of options. One of the counties I previously worked for did, sounds like Caldwell, a foster parent partnered with the DSS to train the MAP. I think that, in fact, when I was licensed, that's how it was. It was much more effective. So, I, we've talked about ways to increase that community collaboration, and it is specifically around fostering, recruiting foster parents, and then the Adult Services Programs, the two areas. I think we have, we owe the community to do a better job, and we're not doing as well as we need to. I'd love your feedback. Maybe we can talk and get some suggestions. I know there's things we're not doing as well as we need to in that area.
And I know, and this is a personal statement, you know, we have biological children, and so we were very specific as to who we could, who we could bring into our home. And so, I can, I can understand the difficulty in placing older children because, you know, we had biological children, and we were scared to bring older children into our home that had experienced horrific, any child that is placed in foster care has mental and emotional damage because they have been taken from their parents, no matter how bad the situation. And that's one of the things that you learn when you are, you know, when you're going through foster training. But, and so, you know, we're guilty of saying, hey, we only take little people because we had older children that we didn't want, you know.
And that's probably better than taking them and then not being able to keep them in another transition, so.
But I just, I mean, you know, and this is a personal thing. I would love to see more importance placed on recruiting foster families and, you know, and it's not, I mean, one is, one to me, sure, as a county commissioner, yes, there's a financial aspect, but more than that, there is a, you know, group homes never a good option for a child. And a child knowing that they can't find anybody to take them is not a good thing for a child. And, you know, you know, I just, I would like, I would like to see more, more importance put, placed on, hey, we need foster families. And, you know, and it's not an easy thing to do.
No.
You know, and, and that's one thing, you know, you talked about the monthly room and board stipend and those things. You can't do, it's not gonna, you know, that little stipend is not gonna pay for that child.
It's not.
And it's not something that you do to, you know, but it's very, it's, you know, you can't measure the, you can't measure the rewards that you, you know, that you get from these, from those children. And I will say this publicly, we are finished at seven. You know, no more. My wife agrees.
Okay, well, you have to have a limit.
But, but I just, it's frustrating to me that, you know, we can't even get, we can't get enough people to even, you know, and because everybody that starts those MAP classes are not gonna actually go through with the full licensing process because Mark Earl has to come to your house, you know, the fire marshal, and verify that you have, that, you know, not only that you have a smoke detector, but that you have fire extinguishers everywhere that you're supposed to have them, and that every medication's locked up, and that there's not, you know, I mean, in, you know, the requirements of a foster family, if you ask me, are almost ridiculous compared to what the state will allow these children to go back to or to live in before they're, you know. And it's, you know, so it's not an easy thing, but, you know, I think there are a lot of people out there that if we, that if we went hard at it, you know, we could, we could find some more very willing, you know, very willing families.
Well, I totally agree, and I think the one thing you didn't touch on is the being able to keep a child in their same school with some of their same friends. When you can keep them in that county is, you know, reduces that disruption.
My, you may not understood, or I may not have been clear enough a little bit ago. The difference in that, in that pay structure, and, you know, that just doesn't seem, and it's not you, but where is the logic to put $15,000 or $16,000 or $1,200 in one place versus four, or five, or six in a, what makes that facility, why do they do that? Why is it so much higher to go to, why can't we, why couldn't we pay regular foster homes more of that money instead of sending them off to a facility, I guess is my question?
I can't answer that. They're essentially saying the cost of that other agency to, like, when we license a foster home, we pay a social worker that's in charge of teaching the MAP and going out and licensing and filling out all the paperwork and monitoring that home at least on a regular basis, going out, make sure they're maintaining it, making sure they're doing their ongoing education. So, that extra money is to pay that agency to do what we do for our foster homes for them to do to monitor their foster homes. Why it's that big of a incremental difference seems a little high to me, too, but I'm not-
They're getting a whole lot better deal than you're getting.
I wouldn't dispute that.
Just my opinion is, I mean, these are for-profit organizations, and they're gonna charge as much as they can charge. I mean, that's a bad thing to say, but I have no doubt, you know.
The state sets those rates, but they, yeah, it's, they're doing all right.
But, I mean, they're, they're for-profit-
Yep.
-organizations. And, I mean, it's, it's bad to say that they profit off of children, you know, and not to say that they're not providing a service that's needed, but a child makes a living.
Quick question. Do you know how much a, a group home gets, if there was a group home in the county per child? Do you happen to know that or not?
Well, I know, it depends, I probably shouldn't quote, but I mean, with the one child we have in a foster home, in a group home with no mental health, it's $4,500 a month we're paying. Room, board, staff.
That's a group home with no mental health.
Right. Well, the others might be a whole lot different, but the Medicaid steps in and pays the difference, so we don't see the full rate. We only have to pay the full rate when it's a straight placement for, with no mental health diagnosis. That's why, it's not healthy for them. The only time we do it is we have no, no other option. The one time we did it two years ago was when we had a sibling group of five, and we knew they had been through years of trauma, and we wanted to keep them together for a period of time, and the group home gave us a discount rate because it was a group of five. That's the only other time until just recently when we could have no placement at all and ended up with a teenage boy going in a group home.
And one, one thing I would mention, I think we had, does the county still have one child at Cross North School?
One that I'm aware of right now, yeah.
Okay. You know, like, Cross North School is in, just outside of Linville, North Carolina, and it's a very old facility. My mother-in-law actually worked there as a housemother for about two years. And in my opinion, and that is kind of, as group homes go, that's kind of the pinnacle, as good as they get. You know, they have, there's an onsite school, you know, it's as, it's about as good as it gets. But I don't think all group homes are equal by any stretch of the imagination. You know, the Cross North School was 100, you know, 100 years old, and honestly, it looks kind of like a college campus. But it's largely been, you know, been built over the years with, with, you know, benefactors and, you know, donated money. But like you say, there are other, there are other places that, I mean, like, as far as I know, that's as good as it gets.
They actually gave us a slight break, too. They didn't charge us the full rate.
Right, you know, and I don't, you know, and I don't think Cross North, you know, Cross North School, that particular one, is, you know, it's not a for-profit, I may be wrong, but I don't think it is.
I obviously don't know.
But it's actually in, it's actually in Fosco, right outside of Linville. But, you know, anytime we could prevent having to send a child to a place like that, from county, you know, county perspective, I mean, that's a big deal. And I think, too, like you say, it's a big deal for the, for the children if we can keep them, you know, in the county, going to the same school with their friend, you know, with their same, you know, with friends and such as that. But like everything, the, the foster, I won't say foster care business, but the foster care business is not as perfect as, as I think a lot of us would like for it to be.
So, when the, when the group home left down off of 90, because it had to private thing, it just left and there was a void. It was, well, it's been years, several years now, there was a group home.
Just across the bridge, 90 West, on the right.
Well, no, this one was down across from Craftmaster. It was the house. The guy had a Level 3, I think, there. He was from, he had these set up in lots of places. He was from Nun Union, China Grove area, and I think it was a sort of quasi fraudulent. And they got busted, and so, I didn't know if, when something like that happens, if there's anything that picks up that void or, so we don't have anything now, right, in the county, locally. No Level 2, 3, no placements.
Is the closest, the closest, you know, group home facility, would it be, maybe Baptist Children's Home in Lenore?
Probably. That's where we sent the sibling group of five for that short period of time. Because, yeah, I know the teenage boy we were at, we drove, it was four hours away, his initial placement, so, yeah. We drive all over the state sometimes to get home that we place a child in.
Not a grilling by any means, just lots of questions.
I understand, and I'm glad you're interested and want to know about it. It's, it's a real challenge, and it's not, we're not doing the best for our children when we have a limited system like this.
Well, thank you for the report. Good job. Thank you. And Leanne, do you have anything else? Is that it?
That's it.
At this time, an entertaining motion for adjournment of the Consolidated Human Services Board meeting.
I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is made, second to adjourn the Consolidated Human Services Board meeting. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand. At this time, the Alexander County Board of County Commissioners stand adjourned, and the next meeting will be June the 7th at 6:00 here at CBCC. Thank you very much.